All right, ladies and gentlemen, please be seated. We are going to begin this special meeting. The City Council, Calexico Community Redevelopment Agency Successor Agency, Calexico Finance Authority Special Meeting, November 25th, 2013, at approximately 4:35 at this time. So, going down the list here, call to order in attendance. It appears, or it is definite, that four of the council members are here. Who is absent at this time is Councilman Kim. Please note that. And now, ladies and gentlemen, will we please stand as usual and give great tribute to our great country, the Pledge of Allegiance? And I will start it off. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we begin with public comments, if there are some, I would like, as mayor, to give you a little background about why we're here tonight, and I'll make it short, Mayor Protem, time me. I respect and have listened, and I have listened keenly very recently to the fire department about a private company that could help us in the building of the public safety facility. Arguments were made that it could be built and used, had built in a very timely manner, and could possibly even save the public, some public money. Therefore, I temporary, last Tuesday, held up the vote on the bonds. So that tonight, acquiescing to the fire department and owning a sense of public alternative presentation, this is where we are tonight. Now, I do acknowledge that this development was not done in the best timely manner. I take responsibility for that, and will make future corrections. So now, at this point, let's proceed with the presentation. No, I'm sorry, we have public comments. Now, the public comments, this is a special meeting, are only regarding or focused on the two business items we have in front of us. So I want to make that clear, ladies and gentlemen, okay? I don't have any slips from the public, but is there anyone from the public that would like to come forward before we proceed with the presentation? All right. I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, I always forget that. Thank you, Councilwoman Hurtado.
Mayor Hodge?
Yes. Approval of the agenda? Yes. Okay, all right, so going back, I apologize. Is there a motion to approve this agenda?
So moved.
Second, all right. Motioned by Mayor Protem Moreno, second by Councilwoman Hurtado. And let's try electronically to vote. Okay. It passes unanimously, four, zero, and once again, Councilman Kim is absent. Okay, and I'm sorry. Now let me go back to public comments. So, at this point, I don't have a slip, but is there anyone that would like to come forward? All right. Oh, very good, okay. Just please state your name, address, for the record.
Good afternoon, I'm here to be the City Councilman Shamon, please hear City Council. As of, obviously, the first meeting, I stated, Mayor Hodge is at the beginning of the vote to the City Council for approval. And before that, there was basically no plan or action that we felt was adhered to or that was going to be adhered to for that bond. Obviously, in the last couple days, I know quite a few meetings have been done and there has been a plan or some other plan that has been put into place. And if that plan is the plan that was discussed, the fire department is in favor of that plan. If it is not the plan in regards to, as the bond is going to be portrayed as of last week when it was brought up, we are not going to be in favor.
Okay, very good, thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, then, ladies and gentlemen, let's move forward, and A is public presentation by RRM on status of main fire station and possible options. It's all yours, Ms.
Thank you very much. My name is Candace Wong, and I'm with RRM Design Group. We're a public safety firm from San Luis Obispo. And the assessment team consisted of myself and a structural engineer consultant that we hired. RRM Design Group is a public safety design architectural firm. We have expertise in police stations, fire stations, emergency operation center, and communications center design. And that's why we were hired, to help the city assess the existing structure. For tonight's presentation, we'll review the purpose of what we were hired to do. We'll go through the building condition assessment, and we'll look at the building codes and the building systems. And then we will talk about the findings and the next steps for this project. The purpose for the study that we were hired to do was to inform the city if the existing facility could be rehabilitated and expanded. And if the existing building could be seismically upgraded and retrofitted to comply with current building codes and the Essential Services Act. And so, because it's the public safety center, it not only has to comply with the current building codes, but it has to comply with the Essential Services Act as well, which is a higher level of structural requirements for the building. The idea behind that is that this facility would be up and running after a seismic event or any emergency that would occur. So, the study included the fire station, which is in red, as you see there. There is dispatch center in the yellow, and the police station is in blue. And you'll note that there is an expansion to the existing police station that was done in the late 1990s. We have the salary court that's to the bottom of the building, or bottom of the page. And then we have a carport, which is in the bright yellow. So that is the study area, that is the building that we took a look at in this assessment. We did not look at the site as much, nor the carports that the department vehicles or parts underneath. So when I talk about the building code assessment, we're talking about the Essential Services Act. We're also talking about the plumbing code, mechanical code, electrical code, how the building would comply with Title 24, which is concerned about energy consumption, and the NFPA, which is fire protection, exiting, and accessibility. So going into the findings, if you have a copy of this report here, this has a much more detailed narrative about all these findings. This is a summarized spreadsheet that you see in front of you. So, from the Essential Services Act, you can see plumbing, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and NFPA again. And we looked at the police department and the fire department separately. Because the police department had a renovation, as I said, in the late 1990s. So it changes the analysis of it, because it has a more recent addition and seismic separation. Whereas the fire department did not have any major renovations since it was built in 1971. And so, our findings were that there were a lot more defermenting items. And it was not as co-compliant as the police station in some regards. And so you can see that column, potentially compliant, potentially non-compliant, upgrade and renovations. You see there's a, the majority of the X's fall within the columns that talk about the non-compliant. And this is not too surprising, as the building is nearly 40 years old, and the lifespan of a typical public safety center is about 50 years. And you would expect major renovations every 20 years, which the police station did receive. The other thing that's really important to note when we look at the code is that the building was built in 1971. And that was before the Essential Services Act wasn't active in California. That wasn't active in 1976. And so, the basis for the building as it was built was not compliant with the newer code that came out in '76. And every six years or so, we have gone through a code cycle, which updated the code and the Essential Services Act to recognize seismic events as they happen in California, what we learn from them, and so the codes became more and more stringent in order for these facilities to remain operational after a seismic event. The next category is exiting. And you can see that there's a lot of non-compliant exiting as well, and a need to upgrade and renovate in order for these doors at the police department and the fire department to be compliant. Today, for exiting, you need to be able to take public, like me, myself, if I were to walk into the police or fire department, I would have no special knowledge of the building. And therefore, if I were in a meeting with some staff there, I wouldn't know how to get out of the building unless there was proper signage and an easy way to get out. And so, when we reviewed the fire department and the police department exiting, there was a need to update that. And with the addition of the carport and some things that happened in recent years, exiting is not as it was when it was originally constructed. We're fencing now in the back. And there's not a sidewalk or a public way to move the public sidewalk, or the public, myself, or anybody who would be, who would have special needs. And that's where accessibility comes in, in the ADA code. And so you can see that at the police department, when you're looking at the jail, or you're looking at the front door, which was recently upgraded, that is potentially non-compliant. When I did this study, the door was still being worked on, and it wasn't fully operational yet. So I had to put the X there, but I recognized that there was some renovation going on, and that explains it in the more detailed narrative. But again, you can see that potentially non-compliant and the requirement to upgrade and renovate many of these doors to comply with accessibility is there. Now, in the building code, we talk about, we recognize for public safety centers that most, well, all of the firefighters and the sworn police officers have to be able-bodied in order to perform their duties. But there is also civilian staff in the police department. And so civilian staff is, doesn't have to be able-bodied personnel, or if you have somebody who is on light duty. And so, ADA compliance goes through the whole building. There's a requirement for the whole building to comply, and not just, say, like in some of the fire departments, you can make the argument that the living quarters for the firefighters don't need to be ADA compliant because they are able-bodied as a requirement for them to work in the facility. So, but the more conservative route is to look at accessibility and make sure that door widths, strike side clearances, level, landing on either side of the door is a safer building. We did a lot of, took a lot of photos when we were doing this assessment, so I'll run you through some of the photos and some of the issues that we saw. From a building code assessment standpoint, and I'll talk about the building systems separately. But just looking at the code, the hose tower is a point of concern. It has shown some foundational, or at the bottom of the walls, some major cracking of the ceiling. We also have this carport, which is attached to the hose tower, but then sits on top of the roof of the dispatch center. And so, these two things are not, not right. It needs to be either attached to both structures or seismically flexible. And so it is not, it's, the carport is not compliant with what we want to see in the Central Services Building. We see here, and I apologize for the quality of the photos, there's a lot of yellow ones that you'll see, and that's because of the lighting, which is in the building. The, this is the seismic joint that you see in the police station, and this is where the addition happens. And so you can see to the left is where the wall goes up, and then it starts going across the ceiling. The photograph to your, to the right, shows the floor where that seismic joint happened. And what we noticed was there was settlements there. And that is a sign that, you know, the buildings are, the existing building, the new building, while they have a seismic joint, are reacting differently. And so that is a sign for the construction to be there, that there needs to be some seismic strengthening, even in the newer part of the facility. Storage is always something that older facilities is very short on. This is, what you see in the middle is a door that goes under the stairway at the fire department. And when I crawled into the past the door, what was stored there were junk goods and some books. And what, and that's normally okay if that, if that storage space was one hour rated. And so when it was constructed in the 1970s, there wasn't thought to protect that cavity there. Or, and there's no fire sprinklers in this facility. And so, the potential for that to catch fire, like everybody's home, is high. And so, it's, it's, there's got a lot of things stored in there. And so, that's something that's not co-compliant. Something that also was going on at the time that we took over the facility was there plumbing issues from the second floor restrooms to the restrooms on the first floor. And so what you see here is an attempt to find where the heat was in the plumbing line, and the patching of the drywall afterwards. And so, if you look in the shower, there's a dark cavity at the top there. It's an open hole in the ceiling, because they were still looking for the source of the crack in front of this wall. This is the firefighter dorm room. And the reason why this is not co-compliant is because there are, there's a requirement for sleeping quarters in a fire department to have egress windows. And so that means that firefighters, if they were caught in this building and the building was on fire, just like your house, you have to have a window in your bedroom so that you can escape in, if there's a secondary means of exit other than the door to the room. And so, these windows are up high. You see, there's one right next to the flag, and they're in between the cabinetry. And so they're very narrow, and they're up high. And so, that is also not co-compliant. The windows have to be much lower, and there is a requirement for a certain width for these windows to be compliant. Here is something I found throughout, not surprising again when storage is a shortage, is that electrical rooms become spaces where storage occurs. And so, the one on the right is in the police station, and the one on, excuse me, the one on the left is the police station, and the one on the right is the main switch gear for both facilities. And you can see that there's a, you know, a hint of some boxes, there's a chair in there, and then just miscellaneous things. And so, this is also not co-compliant. The code requires at least three feet of clear space in front of the electrical panels to stay. This is at the fire department again, and there was an electrical panel and a patch panel, I believe, for the phone system. And so that's a picture on the left. And it's behind this office, basically. There is a, some blinds that are vertical blinds that you can see along the back, behind the office, space in the credenza. And so that is also not compliant. You should either move the panel or provide access to it. It can be covered with that. Here is a couple photos for the communication center. So this room is kind of a room that serves many different functions. I think it started off as a mechanical space. There's a sink, a shop sink in there, and there's water here. But then it's also being used as a space where the dispatchers have a little coffee pot in the microwave and a little refrigerator. And then it's also the space for the dispatch equipment. And so you see a lot of patch panels for the phone lines and some other equipment in these photos. And again, there's not clear space in front of the equipment, which is a code requirement. But then this room shouldn't be used for molding purposes. When you have a room that has these type of things, the code requires them to not be used for stores of any other sort. So, this is another example of a space where you need to clean out. This is the communication center. This is the actual server room. And in a emergency communication center in California, all the racks that hold equipment have to be zone four rated. And I believe these racks are not compliant with that, because any rack that holds servers have to be four posts, and these are two posts. So you can see that it goes up and creates a wheel and comes back down. And so there's only two places where there's attachment to the servers and the emergency equipment. And there needs to be four points of connection for those pieces of equipment. And that's so that they survive a seismic event. So, that is one of the major concerns for the communication center. We also have a lot of wiring. And this is more maybe maintenance, it's just to better bundle things so that you can see where, you know, Cat 5 cable or Cat 6 cable is coming and going, phone lines are coming and going, and radio lines are coming and going. The photo on the, the right hand side is right outside of the server room. And the server room is actually a little building, or a little room, inside of the overall police station. And so, it has a ceiling in it, and it has this little cubby space, which again, it's being, it started to be used for storage. And so, it had some cardboard and boxes and things like that on top of it. And in a case of fire, that would be very dangerous for the communication center. And this is a piece of equipment in the fire department. It's a compressor. They use compressors to fill their tanks. And these compressors require a lot of outside air intake in order to run properly. And so, there's two of these that were in the back of the alley. And in order for them to perform at optimal conditions, you would have outside air coming in to facilitate the filling, and then also an exhaust fan to kind of keep the air moving through there. And that was not occurring in a big alley. So with that, I'm going to talk about the building systems assessment. So this is more maintenance and performance of the building systems, the structural system, mechanical plumbing, fire protection, electrical lighting, and communication, and emergency power. So these are not code items. These are building performance, operational issues. So, we did again the matrix, and this is a rolled up summary of it. And pretty much, you could see that we're in the non-compliant range and requiring upgrades and renovations. When we walked around the building, there were many instances where we found, by today's code, there were structural upgrades that were needed for the walls and the lateral bracing system. But we also found that there was a lot of cracking and defermenting for the walls on the exterior. And I'll show you pictures of that. There's also instances where the ceilings are, especially when you have a drop ceiling, there's a stain or something, people take it out, or, and then they don't put one back. There's instances of those. And there was quite a bit of items that we found on the roof that were not typical for the roof. And we found leakage in the fire department. Windows and doors, if you were to do any renovation at this point in time, the existing windows and doors are most likely not compliant to meet energy and for, again, for exiting, which we touched on by. The stair was not compliant, and that occurred in the, in the fire station. The stairs, in order for them not to trip, the code makes you make each rise and run of the stair exactly the same. And so, there was one step that was shorter than all the rest. And so, when I walked out, I noticed it, because, you know, I'm not used to building. And so I noticed these things. And so, that's why the stair is not compliant. And then we have things, in these departments, you know, the bathrooms were actually in pretty good shape. You know, it was the, it was in the renovation in the late 90s. But the fire department, as you saw from the photos, there are a lot of issues with their existing restrooms. And then the equipment rooms were not compliant, because this is the electric area, the model server rooms, things like that. We're, we're using them for storage. And again, so we need to make sure that there's adequate storage elsewhere and not use the equipment. The mechanical plumbing, electrical, we did some investigation of it. As well drawings weren't available, we couldn't find them. And so we had to interview the fire department and the police department as we walked through these spaces, to ask them if the mechanical system was working. And we found, like... was working. And we found, like in the fire department, they said the first floor, the mechanical system doesn't keep up as well as the stuff was, and that was what they told me. I did look at the emergency generator, and it appeared to be in compliance, had been tested. And so that was looking better. But then the communication center was not looking as good, simply because of some of those spaces that were used for the equipment in the break room and in the drawers closet. And so those things need to be corrected. And having an addition would probably help facilitate that. So here's a couple of photos from the roof. And then the one in the upper left-hand corner is, at the time that I was there, the holes in the ceiling of the apse, where they were looking for the leaks. And so when we got onto the roof, you can see that in the upper left-hand corner, that's evidence of bonding, because there's a rippling effect and some dark staining on the roof membrane. And then the bottom two photos just show holes in the roof. And that's probably where the water was coming in. And then the upper left-hand corner shows, you know, a gutter that has, or a downspout, I should say, that's fallen away from the gutter. So that's a maintenance item. But you can also see from the other three photos that there is, the roof is being used for storage as well. And so with the traffic that would come from people moving this equipment or putting more things up there for storage, and this speaks to the efficiency of storage in the facility, is that you're probably walking on a membrane that you shouldn't be walking on, and therefore creating more potential for leaking. This is a major concern, is the radio tower is going through this canopy that I talked about a little while ago, which is attached to the hose tower and then floating on top of the roof of the police station. You can see the little legs in the upper right-hand corner photo. They're just sitting right on top of the roof. And so this has the ability to move and rip off, and then it could shear off the antenna because there's not a whole lot of clearance around the antenna. The hole should be cut bigger, basically, to face that problem. And so if the canopy were to move in a seismic event and the tower didn't, the tower could survive that type of activity. These two things were kind of plumbing related. The one on the left is from the fire department. It's in their apse, and they're using the back of their apse as a workout space. And, you know, the reason why I took a picture of the drain was to remember to talk about in the report, that the drains in the apse aren't tied to a sand and oil separator, which is required by code nowadays, because when you're parking apparatus in the garage, it has at least oil. And these oils get into the super system and just go right in, and that's not code compliant. In the police department, in the jail, there was a need to run water in the sewer so that the sewer gases didn't come up into the building. And so this was a, you know, this is a maintenance problem that should be taken care of. And again, on the right-hand side, there's storage in the police shower, I think in the women's room, at the time that I went through and looked at the building. And then from a communication standpoint, just power, you could tell that, you know, there's just not enough plugs in the older building. This is on the police department, excuse me, on the fire department side, where you see the phone and these electrical outlets. There's also a door that was off a hinge on the fire department side. It was a door to the exterior from the shop. And then there was, what you see over on the left-hand side, is a unit heater, which is very old and not used. And it would be great if the fire department had a unit heater that worked on those things where it is needed. But it's also awfully close to the climbing vent system, which is those yellow tubes that you see. And there was some ad hoc kind of structure around there, which is not supposed to occur. So it should be, that should be fenced. So going back to the assignment, our assignment was to assess the existing facility, to see if rehabilitation, renovation, and expansion were feasible options for the city. And I think through discussion with our structural engineer and from all that we saw, we thought that renovation of the existing police station was viable. It wouldn't be, it would be expensive, but viable. And from all the code issues and deferred maintenance that we saw on the fire department side, we definitely would recommend that you would demolish and rebuild the fire station portion of this public safety center. And I have high concerns about the communication center and the safety of the equipment for the dispatch center, from the antenna down to the equipment on the racks. And certainly fixing that covered part four of the public When we were doing the study, we talked about next steps for the project. Things that were not done was an architectural program to understand how big the fire station needs to be, what the square footage is, what a conceptual design might look like if we were to renovate the fire station and communication center on the existing site, and renovate the police station. And obviously, nothing, no decision to be made if you didn't have a conceptual budget that related to those two items, as well as a timeline and some understanding of the framework. So with that, that's the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. What is your name?
Candace.
Candace, thank you very much. Okay, counsel, please come forward. Okay, we now have a full council. Welcome, Councilman Kim. Are there any questions that you would like to ask, Candace, concerning this presentation? Candace, is that right? The issue about, no, am I correct, no windows or very little windows? That's a serious issue for both facilities. Is that correct?
Well, it's very, it's important in the fire department.
Yes.
And the sleeping quarters.
Right.
So the employees have second needs of egress in case of an emergency. Right now, all they have is their door that goes down the stairs, and the code requires availability of the egress.
And for the police department, are they in the same situation, or is it different?
No, because there's no sleeping in the
Correct.
...department. And so their windows are fine, other than want to take a look at that for energy compliance for the telephone wire.
Okay. And you did say the department could be, what's the word, refurbished or re-
Renovated.
Renovated, excuse me. But at a very, most likely, likely, it would be very expensive.
Yes. When we're looking at buildings that are over 20 years old, they have to have really big homes to be built, very structural homes, in order for the renovation to be economically feasible. And while we can find creative solutions to make it more viable, we'd probably be better if we spared the revenue in building a new, more current facility on the streets.
If we, if we just fix, if we, between now and maybe fixing up the police department, we had an earthquake, that would be a real concern for their safety, would not in that facility?
Yes. So the, one of the big things about seismic event is when you look at these fire stations, they have to be operational immediately to belong, you know, so that they can be available for the public. Now, if the building suffers structural damage or any, you know, equipment that starts falling away, then the building department, the city's building department would either yellow tag or red tag the building. And when that occurs, then you can no longer occupy the building. Therefore, it's no longer a basis for operation in the city.
That would not be good.
No, because you see the building, your dispatch center is a building.
Wow.
That would create a very difficult situation for the city.
But without a doubt, the priority is the fire department. It is in pretty bad shape, isn't it?
I agree with the fire department and the dispatch center.
Dispatch center.
Right up there, definitely.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just came back from taking a visit there at the location of the fire department. And I saw some settling of the soils, apparently, which was described to me where the engines park. Was that studied?
Yes, we noted that. I didn't put that photo in the presentation, but there was discussion in the structural write-up about the differential settlement in the slab inside the apse. And then there's a lot of it present on the side.
A lot of, I'm sorry?
A lot of settlement of the concrete on the side, so in the back parking lot, as well as the front.
And I believe you indicated that there is no cost estimate at this point?
That's correct. We did not.
No rough park, ballpark?
No. We kind of need to have something like a sign in order to put a cost to it.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. I want to really thank you for the effort in coming here for the presentation. You know, it had been written and people could read it, but I think that for the public, you know, whoever sought to come, like many, many times, presentations are very effective. And so this was not a waste of time. I mean, we all knew that both buildings are in bad shape, especially the fire department. But the information, the specific information you pointed out is very informative and will help us make future decisions. So I thank you. On behalf of the city council, we thank you and staff. Thank you very much.
I'll stay for the resume meeting.
Okay, sure.
Please.
All right, very good. Okay. Then, presentation is over. We're going to move on to business items. And before we move forward on it, okay, are there, for what, for her presentation?
Public, well, not.
Is there a, any public comments on Candace's presentation from the company? Guess not. Okay. As I stated before, I strongly supported the fire department in the best interest, meaning a lower cost for the public. And for me, last week, it wasn't so much the issue, for me, of voting no on the bonds, but voting for the best financing that would promise in writing that certain amount of money would be prioritized first and foremost for the fire department and then consequently the police department. I felt that maybe, you know, after last week's meeting, that there was some misunderstandings or misconceptions or insecurity on saying yes to the bonds between the fire department and city staff. So I need to explain, so it's transparent. Last week, I called a meeting in haste to face, to go face to face and get concerns on the table about reasons why maybe the fire department was reluctant. And I'm going to state that, that they were reluctant in voting yes on the bonds in financing the public safety facility. The meeting took place on Friday, November 22 at 4:30 PM. Present was city manager, Marshal Lynn, myself, Chief Tabatas, Sergeant Herman Duran, and Mohammed, from, please forgive me, Shannon Mohammed, from the fire department, plus Lieutenant Geraldo. At this point, I want to apologize to Mayor Protem for not slowing down, getting my thoughts together, and inviting you, sir. It was wrong for me not to invite you first or any other council member. It's a learning process, and that will be corrected.
Thank you.
And I apologize to you, because you should have been there.
No, that's okay.
Okay. All right. So here's the business item. Discussion and/or action of approval of a resolution of the city council, of the city of Calexico approving the trust agreement, assignment agreement, lease agreement, the project lease, and continuing disclosure agreement in connection with the Calexico Financing Authority, Measure H, sales tax, lease revenue bonds, issue of 2013, and taking certain other actions in connections there too. Now, we have, and that is business item and under consent item, but we'll get to that later. At this point, we have a memo that gives two different revisions, and we'll go over that. But I think at this time, and thank you, Nick Serene, for sitting in. Marshal Lynn, would you like to come forward and give some clarification or insight?
By the way, thank you. I used to be the financial advisor for the city. Now I'm the city manager. So in interruption, you saw me.
Can I say that?
City manager. I'm not so sure that I want that role.
My apologies.
We'll talk about that later. The document that I've given you is a directory long document, things that we have talked about over the past couple of weeks, that for the mid-part of this calendar year, the city council and director staff completely had what they wanted to capitalize the dollars coming off of the federal age tax, which was approved by the citizens of the city of Clarksville on June 8, 2020. The purpose of course these money was to provide money for fire department, police, reimprove it, others capital investments that the city needs. And I know that I've been around a long time, I know that we have an awful lot of capital need. Most cities have been, have been, have been, have been, showing down now, making more money. The role that I play, that we have always played in the city, should say always, in the city and definitely have been it for a long time. And we weren't here fighting in 1908, but we're pretty close to it, or maybe hitting a return back to kick here in 1978. The goal that we've always had as the financial advisors of the city, and over 100 other cities in the state of California, go districts, to make sure that the city, when it does sell bonds, does it in the best possible time, gets a loan at possible rate, which translates into real bond proceeds with huge spend projects. So we now are at a pay point where the federal government, quantitative easing, is coming to an end. And we saw an example of that about six weeks ago, when they just, when the feds announced that they would end quantitative easing and bond rates dropped to over 100 points, it occurred about two weeks ago, to accept the bond market into an infinite kill fit. That would happen in the case of Calexico, when it pops over, going to a million and a half dollar, act of protest, pretty serious. I'm not, I don't have a crystal ball, which I did, because that'd be, I'd be the one with the crystal man in the world. because I'd be the one who's the crystal man in the world. I do know that quantitative easing will end, the feds announced it. And it will end until after Christmas, because there's a simple reason that they don't want to really gum up all the people shopping for that because people won't spend money on interest rates a lot. It will happen within that, and it will happen very soon. And that's why, one of the reasons we've seen a lot of bond issues come to the marketplace. We're really in a very, very, very sweet spot from which to sell bonds. But let's get back to some of the issues at the end. And I was extremely informed and happy that we had this fire presentation about the fire department. That's back when I was walking into the fire department. I've been in the fire department since my life. You guys, really, that fire department really, really need help. And I certainly agree with the findings of the architect. Probably the best thing to do is put the fire really just to tear it down. Number one, structurally, I think it sounds, certainly, I think it's in the wrong place for the city. Now, to be very candid, there seems to be someone, and I'm going to be frank to you know that I come frank to the point, there's some distrust. The fire department wants to have a fire station. And we probably need a fire station anyway. Which department may be a little bit different in sense that we probably could use anyone is the need to build a new police department as critical organization. I think honestly said, it's probably not as critical. Maybe it doesn't have to go right away. It probably should be done within the next couple of years. And we do have some options. The best option, of course, is for the city to sell its bonds now. Sell at the lowest possible rate. We have the money to the bank, locked into the bank at a fixed rate of interest. It can't be changed. And you get an opportunity, maybe six, seven years, when we pay it down to go back to straight loan, refund the bond, somewhere faster than straight to build with your house loan, three months. This is the cheapest way to the public offering. The thing that's been really good about public offering is transparent to the public. I have been, I've been a bookkeeping laborer. I've done probably seven hundred thousand public offerings in my life. It needs to be transparent to the public. The public totally understands what we'll do in advance, understand financing. And I think that the power is not as long as this city council. Many city councils, city councils, or any government agency. Mayor Hodge asked me to come down to the meeting on Friday. A little bit ashamed, I think I had a pair of jeans on and a sweatshirt to go down quicker than I possibly could. And we had a very frank talk with the chief of police. Shannon, the represent, fire chief, a very candid talk. And maybe a little heated at times, but it was good. I think it's a good day, I mean, you're just clear to me. Fire department, through one, as far as the fire station built, it's pretty possible. And I think it's probably rational for that, particularly after watching all the structural aspects and trying to fix that, probably there's a wee bit of time. We'll have an old updated, fixed up building. See, I don't think agenda tonight really does not address the fire station per se. It doesn't address any other activities that we use to invest in.
I don't have time for you.
The item on the agenda tonight, the very pure items, is the resolution of the finance authority and the resolution of the city council to authorize the sale of the bonds. But with the caveat, that in the preliminary offering statement, which is the thick book, everybody had the draft of that. Everybody had the draft of that. Within that book, as required by the SEC, and that's how we are run, we are governed by the SEC, everything we do has to comply with DOT framework. In that is a, is a description of what's called the project. And I have, at the request of, of Mayor Hodge, drafted two potential, Nick, if I can handle that. Two potential handouts.
We actually have.
That could be included in, in the PLS, which I think will give the fire department the
I got it again.
The customers that you guys want in one of these bonds.
Where do you have these?
It's okay.
This is, by the way, the Detroit City Council's draft. Let me just read them, because they're both extremely similar. And we can change the words, but if you just give me a concept, I'll be able, I'll be able to work, submit the words, pick up what you at the city council want.
No, I don't. Okay, just take.
You are the only five people on the platter that have the ability to change where the money goes. No one else. Does it belong to the police department, it belongs to the fire department, it belongs to the city basket. If your money represents a steady body, you can make whatever change you want. Secondly, you set the priorities for the project to go. First one, it's extremely simple, because the project on page four are funded in the PLS, which is actually only about two paragraphs. And simply say it says, it is intended to use bond proceeds to build capital projects throughout the city. Number one property project, the city council, the public safety building will serve both the police and fire departments. The purchase of the project site as well as finding, designing, construction of the facility, where the fire department will commence immediately upon the closing of bond issue. The planning, designing, construction of the police facility will be initiated soon in the fire facility cleaning process underway. Soon as after the project constructs, are determined the public safety building, remaining bond proceeds in the direction the city council will be for the fire department, senior citizens, facility operators, for joint, or for popular, for joint school districts, city, twenty-four other projects that are determined by council. The city council, we're closer with the matter of age of value board and city priorities. The only change now, to give a little more comfort and get up to the discretion of the city council, it doesn't have to be in here, is on paragraph one, where it says, the number one priority of the city council for the public safety building is to build police and fire departments. It's estimated, Simmer said, that approximately ten million dollars will be allocated to the public safety building. I think that's where the rub is here, the city council. I believe there, and I think the council will realize we need to have the, a fire department built. We also have other, other, other needs. I'm not so sure if your advisor, again, I'm just advisor, I don't know. The police department may not have to be built right away. And that the fire department building could be constructed in modulars. We know that when we have money, a year or two, ever, that then we can go ahead and start the police department. Obviously, the architect might, right now, is a cold question, probably not a bear question. Do you guys ever done modular type building? We know we've never had, obviously, in a year or two, we plummet and everything else.
Modular buildings?
No, not modular buildings, modular. We actually did this over in the city of Griffin, California. We have a fire department, if you go for, you have the kitchen, the staff, everything else. But the idea is when that money came through, we'd add on PD. So that worked for us. Question is, have you ever done something like that? When we built the project building, which would be the fire station, and as money comes in, we look at the police station.
Yes, you're talking about phased?
Phases.
Phased project, right.
Okay, phased project.
One of the things that we, one of the things with Measure H, Measure H calculation and the sizing of the bond issue is based upon fifty percent of the revenue that's directed by the city council lack of law, never took into account, ran from Plaza. Grand Plaza is going to happen a lot more when you come in. Don't forget, we have a covenant agreement, phase one, guarantees this, like, somewhere between three to four thousand dollars a year. Which really is money that's going to go to the police and fire for operations. That money happens outside, police and fire operations. So we'll take a decision now, if we go off that. We don't know, the project, second phase, we know it's going to be built. We don't know exactly when, it's not the case to be a hangup right now with IBD, the electric power. We know it all the way, it will be built. We also know that our center will be by two thousand fifteen to build. My estimates on the, on the revenue coming into the city will be anywhere between two to three and a half million dollars annually on scale tax revenue. There's also another part of money, and Oscar kind of said, and maybe we can talk about it, but I think maybe we don't. Talk to him later about it. The city of Callexco received from the city of California, what we call the finding of completion, is a part of the line down process of the success rate we see to the RDA plan. That means that right now, in the bank, he's not talking about bonds, in the bank, the trusty bank, get the money in the wrong for one year, approximately three and three quarter million dollars that is unallocated for projects. That could be a way, could very well be that we, you may very well want to get a surety assist and destroy that idea and say, don't shoot the messenger. You may want to go ahead and say, okay, we need to, we need to do the bonds. I think we all agree on that, every issue. Secondly, set at the top for the fire commission, work together with other types of funding sources, such as the RDA, additional money, additional money that we know will become in S L S, all of which will be the ECD. You may lack the privilege behind, but we know that we plenty of assets together will be activated and will be, maybe a year, a year and a half behind. You know, if you're ever going to enter a new building, that will happen. It will watch. It's also realized too, that the measures have all the citizens of the city of Callexco. We have the guiding need, which we have a park skirt. The citizens, we have a whole, whole thing we need to do. So we need to sit down and weigh priorities for what we want to do. And I think the priorities, the action of prioritizing what you need to do comes second, get the money in the bank first. You know you've got it, you know now you have a definite amount of money to the penny, because you know what the interest rate is. And the hope to make the waiting happens, eighty million dollars. That's the representation that I have on the slide.
Any questions?
Yes.
Councilman Kim.
First of all, you said only five of us can make the decision to where money goes.
What do you mean?
You said only five council members can only make the decision where money goes.
The three of the five, it takes at least three council members to decide where this money is spent.
Yes. So we, the memo is saying that we're going to set the ten million dollars for the safety building. But later on, probably in the middle of the process, probably can say some of the three council members changed their mind to say, oh, we're going to spend only for the fire or we're going to spend only for the police. Or we, as a matter of fact, we're going to only just remodeling, now we're going to, we're not going to build it. So we have to, we have urgency in using this money to other side. But we can change anytime.
Boy, that, Mr. Kim, that is absolutely true. And I've seen, I have seen city councils do this.
Yes.
Let me, let me state this. Once you start the design process, architects, engineers, electrical contractors, everybody that's involved in that, you're going to spend a lot of money. You're going to be spending bond proceeds to do that. You don't have cash in the bank to spend that money.
No, I'm, I'm just, my question, I, I understand what you're trying to say, but I want my answer, can we change the mind later to the other side? Ten million dollars can be reduced to one million or two million or maybe nothing?
Theoretically, you could.
Yes, that's, that's, that's what I'm asking question. Yes, I needed the yes or no, that's it. That's, thank you. I have another question.
Let him explain, Councilman Kim.
No, I already have, he said the yes. So that's what I needed.
Okay, go ahead and explain.
With that said, with that said, we are going to, if the council so direct, we're going to be put us into the bond offering documents that this station is going to be built. And it's a promise to the bondholder to buy these bonds, that their money is going to be used for a fire station. We're going to covenant to that. Once you say yes, that's it. Now, could you theoretically and technically speaking, in the real world, yes, would you want to? Because I think that that's not a, I think that's just, I don't think that's the right thing to do. When you make the commitment to spend the money, you know that you're going to do it, you told everybody you can do it, go ahead and build it.
How much is, how much is fee for this process? How much fee and interest rate on this bond?
Well, these, these bonds are sold in, in a competitive environment. Generally speaking, the underwriters' fee used to be quite high. We've got the underwriters' fee at about eight or nine dollar bonds. So the, all the fees are competitive fees. Let me tell you what happened on that. Callexco, since I've been here, we always use the top names in the field. Our bond council is the top, always the top names. That's one of the reasons that all our bonds, excluding the Parkville CFD, are rated, highest rated standard course of all bond issues currently. One of the reasons is because we use the top team. So yeah, there's going to be a couple hundred thousand dollars in fees that have to be paid to these big offerings to get the thing done. That's for sure.
Okay, how much?
I have a question.
Approximately?
I'll, I'll give you that.
Yeah, estimate, yes, I understand that.
Probably, you're probably going to spend about, probably about two to two hundred fifty dollars.
Two hundred, two to two hundred fifty K.
Please wrap it up, Councilman Kim, your time is up. Please wrap it up.
What?
Please wrap it up, your four minutes is up. Yes, but your four minutes, please wrap it up, sir.
He's, my four minutes is all, all running out.
Mayor, may I?
No, no, let's not start. Go ahead, wrap it up.
This is for the, we've been, we've been talking.
Mayor.
Councilman Kim, please wrap it up.
It's been three minutes.
Because you don't like it, you cannot stop me.
I'm sorry.
You don't like it, you cannot stop me.
He has another minute? You have one more minute? Go ahead, my apologies, one more minute.
You don't have, you cannot stop.
There is a time limit, Councilman Kim. Let's not argue. Proceed, you're wasting your time.
Doesn't matter. So you don't like it?
Go ahead, sir. Please proceed, sir.
Where is?
One minute.
What is the interest rate?
I can't tell the accurate interest rate until we actually mark the bond.
Okay, how, estimate how much?
I'm estimating a true interest rate.
Second time he asks the same question.
He asks the same question.
I don't have, I don't have.
No, yes, I understand, it's estimated, always estimated. Four two, four two, four point five?
No, I'm estimating about four point seven, four point eight.
Okay. I believe the, you, you, you bond, bonded, I was assuming pool bond. I think I gave to all the council member, we should have borrowed one point sixty million dollars. We got the one point two million dollars cash. And our, the paper is saying is our debt is, we're going to be, we have to pay three point seven million dollars. So if we borrow this, this twelve million dollars, how much total debt we have to pay?
I'm sorry, Mr. Kim.
How much debt do we have to pay for borrowing the bonds?
Well, it's the, the same analogy as when you buy your, buy a house.
Yes.
Yes, yes, I understand that.
Generally speaking, as a rule of thumb, not going back to my.
Rule of thumb.
Probably about, you probably end up paying twice. You probably end up paying twice the base value of the bond issue.
Over sixteen years.
But we paid around three times, three times, more than three times for the, we borrowed, we get the money. We got only one point two million dollars cash. We paying end up three point seven million dollars.
This time is up.
So swimming pool ones. So the, like you saying the two times, I see the three times here, more than three times.
Well, that's swimming pool, Councilman Kim.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about the bond. I'm just swimming pool using as a sample.
I see, sir. But your time is up now. Will you please give the other council members a time? We're going to move on.
Don't you want to know what's going on here?
Yes, I appreciate your inquiry. Maybe you'll have another chance. Is there anybody else that wants to ask a question to Marshall Quinn?
Yes.
Not Quinn. Good God, I'm getting everybody mixed up. Quinn Lynn, Lynn Quinn, city manager. Okay, go ahead, Councilman Kim. I'm Castro.
Kim. Okay, I have a question to Mr. John Quinn.
John Quinn?
Yes, John Quinn.
I know, I'm sorry.
That's his name?
Yes. No, it's just me, I'm kidding. Lynn Quinn, Quinn Lynn.
John Quinn. Okay, Mr. Quinn. I, I would like to know how much money we, the city of Callexco owes in, 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 in bonds? The total amount, how much the city of Callexco owes in bonds?
He's making the argument, he shouldn't bond.
It's about thirty-eight million dollars.
About thirty-eight?
Yes.
Million dollars, right? Okay, what I understand.
It's good, Mr. Castro, that's three dollars.
Yes, I, yes, yes, I understand.
There's a difference.
What I know is forty-two million dollars, okay? You say thirty, thirty-eight million dollars, right? Okay. That money, I mean, that's, that's what we owe. The city of Callexco, right? And how much money we have, we have since twenty oh three on, on the, on the, on bonds? Cash money, how much money we have? How much money we have right now, until today?
Cash?
Yes, cash. We have cash. Well, it's because what I know since twenty oh three, we, the city of Callexco, they got twenty million dollars for light areas in order to rebuild the light areas in downtown.[1781.14] So until today, until today, we have $20 million cash money in the City of Calixco. And you should know that.
Okay, you believe that and you want to respond? That's his, that's his allegation or, or argument?
I'm having trouble making that connection.
Okay.
Do I understand he's saying that we have $20 million in cash? Is that correct, Councilman Kim?
Yes, in cash.
Could we have some of that?
Okay.
Okay, we don't?
You don't know.
All right. Councilman Castro, he is saying respectively that that's not true, but you could take it up in private later.
He said that, he said that, he's a public director.
Okay, so.
In my case, in my concern is, we are, we have $20 million in cash money because of that bond since 2003.
2003.
And we are looking for another bond. I believe we need to use what we have right now in order to rebuild, to fix, to remodel public safety. So that's the reason I believe we don't, we don't need to ask for another bond.
Okay.
There are no $20 million in bond proceeds.
Well, it's close to $20 million, but you didn't say you don't know nothing about that, right?
No, I, well, when I say, I'm saying it's not there.
It's not there.
Not even $1 million? I mean, not 20 million?
So how much we have then?
Go ahead, John, Mr. Quinn.
I also clarify the 38, it sounds daunting to everybody like that. 38 million dollars is an amount of money with projected interest toward the end. We have refundings, we have all kinds of things that happened to us, and we lost the RDA. I think there was a number that Mr. Lynn used of 3.3 million dollars that's more appropriate in actual cash money sitting in the drawer.
Yes, that's what we're saying.
The others are really not anything but potential debt, I would say, because the city has no debt, the RDA, we don't know what's going to happen, we just keep getting the bonds until they run out, or till we get refinancing or whatever's going to happen to them. We really don't know what's going to happen with that one.
Mayor, may I?
I think, is your time up? Okay, one more question, now allow you.
No, I believe what you said is true. If we don't use the money from RDA, we are going to lose that money. That, that money is goes straight to the state. But there is some money, there is some money, there is some money for the purpose to either to remodel, to, to, instead to remodel, wait, to, I'm sorry? To renovate the buildings, anything related to fix, to fix either downtown or either some other buildings for public safety.
Okay.
So that's my concern.
That's good, but let's.
And like I told you, I mean, you say you don't know nothing about that? Thank you.
Okay, very good.
My turn?
Okay, you want to, you want to say something to that?
Yeah, the comment that I made, Mr. Kim, I actually went back and checked out the castles here, so the total interest payment, $12 million, will be about $6 million, so that's an incredibly great deal, incredibly fine deal.
We borrow, we borrow 12 and we have to pay 18. Over 16 years.
Over 16 years, and at a, you know, the rate of interest on the thing is as best as it's going to be.
All right.
I do have some questions.
Yes. Councilwoman Hurtado, four minutes, please, roughly, around there?
Got it.
Just for clarification, I do chair what's considered the successor agency, the agency that took over the RDA funding, and the consultant that we have is not yourself, it's someone else from your agency that comes and visits when we have those meetings. The successor agency, what it's doing is closing out RDA and it has full control. And when I say control, there is real control for every dollar that was left over in that fund as far as what it is that's going to be occurring from here on in. As far as what I've seen, and I'm not prepared today to be able to show any of my notes, and we don't have that appropriate person here to answer those questions, but the successor agency has been going over consistently the spending from that remaining amount of money. And as far as I recall, I don't believe there was anything left over. Everything's already been accounted for in that situation. That is, that's a comment, and I guess we could clarify later. But the other question is, being that what I'm listening to and knowing the history of why this presentation was requested by the city, the fire department specifically, was that the concerns of the living quarters and the conditions that the fire department has that are much more severe than the police department, I have a question. What is the rough price of a fire department building solely, alone, only? Because I remember originally we had spoken about, I remember a figure of $7 million to be able to build a brand new fire department only. Is that correct?
The experience that I have, I'm not an architect, I don't pretend to be a street designer, but we have seen quality fire stations built in Calixco, somewhere between $600 and $700 million. They're not tall, they're truly functional, and they go to a certain purpose, building in the last 50 years, put it that well, the most important area of the city of Calixco, they're in the right place.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, I visited the premises just now to look for myself and to see for myself. I hadn't had an opportunity to take a look, and they are conditions that probably no human being should be living in, much less our fine officers from our fire department, besides other issues that that location has. What concerns me as well is that we do have other needs in this city besides what we're talking about now as far as public safety, which is our parks and the pool. And so what the concern is, is that we jump from $7 million to $10 million, and we're leaving out in the cold the rest of the public for public services. So as far as the pricing then, on the fire department, you say that it was approximately $7 million, approximately? Because that's what we were looking at before.
Based upon a lot of factual information, so, yeah.
And that we do consider the fire department needs at this time as critical. And there's many reasons behind why we say the word critical. And the concern is, is that there's just not enough money for everything. And being that we do have the new outlets coming, there may be a future possibility of being able to do more, but at this given time, what's before us at this time, we can't stretch that money to be able to cover absolutely everything. I believe this board needs to look at what's critical, what has already been down the pipe in the works. And it is clear that the fire department is the critical department that requires that this council consider the assistance at this time. That's all.
Okay. Mayor Protem.
Yes, good evening. Mr. Lynn, taking into consideration some of the comments that were brought up this afternoon with why bond use money that we already have, if we do not bond this particular $12 million and after a certain amount of time pay back 18, are there any other means to construct a firehouse for the city of Calixco?
Now, first thing, before you let out the term contract, and Nick, me, I'm, before you let out the term contract, this California, you have to have cash in the bank. If it's not okay, add it go. If you want to go to the fire station, you better have money in the bank in order to go ahead and build it. There's really no other way to do it. There's a comment that was $20 million. John was a book, went back and looked at the day, but I probably second to hunt, I look at your book, you don't have $20 million on your account. You have any money lying around at all, it's in the enterprise funds, the water.
Right, yes.
Use that. You go there, you guys got to go through a problem.
I haven't had the luxury of touring the fire department as of late, but I'd like to go out there and check it out just to see for myself. I'm in favor of that being the top priority, is the construction of a firehouse for the city of Calixco. Then the pool, then police renovation for its departments. I think it's prudent on our part to really take a look at the needs, not the wants, of the community. We all want many things, but we can't afford all the things that we, that we want. We can only afford those things that we need, and those are the ones that we need, we need to address. No other funding mechanism will allow us to build a firehouse, so if the bonding is the way to go, and we've got a low rate, and we can do it with money in the bank, then I think this is the way to go. I don't see any other alternative, Mr. Mayor. And I'll be first to make the motion on this.
Well, I'd like to talk.
Sure.
Let me talk, and then I was going to make a motion.
Okay.
The, the one that I support is the one with the wording, it is intended to city to use bond proceeds to build capital projects throughout the city. Fire, police and fire departments is estimated that up to $10 million will be allocated to the public safety building. Now, it must be clear, we are not saying that definitely $10 million is going to be spent. We just want that allocated. We may find, we may find that we may be able to do a joint facility for $9 million, eight and a half. We don't know. But I want to implore my city councilman that we're not saying that we're going to definitely put aside $10 million or use it. That's just there in case we need it. And also at the same time, quickly, quickly Grand Plaza revenue will be coming in, and that's going to help Measure H to take care of the other issues of recreation, parks, and so forth. So I am concerned about senior citizens and recreation, and I really feel that we're not going to have to spend the $10 million. But I support the fire department, they're, they're ready to say yes to the bonds, but with that specific language. So I would like to make an emotion, and there's a second for discussion, that we vote on the revised one that states, the difference here is that it is estimated that up to $10 million will be allocated to the public safety building. And we could look at it in phases, we understand the priority is the fire department, but the other argument is, you know, I mean, come on, I mean, the police department, okay, we're like, oh, we're competing, they're worse, and the police, they're not as bad. They're bad. The police department is bad, okay? The stench in there is, is pretty bad. They've got issues. So if, if we could, you know, go up to $8, $9 million and have both in a joint facility, why not? I think in the long run, that would be better cost effective than stalling and then looking at the tremendous amount of money we would have to refurbish the police department. We need to consider them too. Absolutely, the priority is the fire department. But the police department is right behind them. I don't know why we're kind of making like, ah, they're okay, there's nothing wrong. There's a lot wrong with the police department. So that's my, that's my position. So I'd like to make a motion on, to change the wording that everything else that is stated, just like the other motion, the other memo, but the wording here is, it is estimated that up to $10 million we allocate it to the public safety building, the public safety billing. And we can work all things out about phases and so forth, but we all understand with, with it that the fire department is the priority. Is there a second for discussion?
A second to the discussions.
Okay.
Why we looking for the bonds only? There have another way to lease to own. It's a lot cheaper and faster. We can get a bidding for the lease to own, several companies are bidding, so we lease it, and then later we can own for that. That becomes cheaper, and we don't have to owe that, owe the bond. Bond is like a, we got already enough payments to pay. We're going to be adding more. And if we issue the bond, there's no major money to can, can using as a cushion in case of we have, we need more safety officers, we're not going to be able to spend money anymore, because half of them, we already using it, you're using half of them to issue the, make the bond payments. So we're not going to have a cushion on the front of major money. And Mr. Hartje was saying is, we're going to have money quickly coming in from the Grand Plaza. We only going to have $300,000 next 27 years. In case of they have to increase the more than million dollars to bring in the sales tax, we're not going to have a half of them increase more only. So actually, we're not going to have more than $300,000 for the sales tax.
Every year for 27 years?
27 years.
I don't think so, but.
Yes, that's 27 years of a bond.
Only 350? We have phase two and phase three that's going to bring in a lot of money. Marshall Lynn, you like to respond to that?
Total 100, $1 million over, then we're going to have a half of the increase more of the sales tax.
Okay. Would you allow Marshall Lynn to respond to your comment?
Mr. Kim, the cheapest way any city can finance, I mean, at least the own, the least arrangement, still have the access to the capital market, based upon the rating of the city, and it's a tremendous amount of fee, the private sector, private sector financing. Most transparent, cheapest way for municipal government to borrow into a public entity. No ifs, no ands, no buts about it. It's the cheapest and most profitable way, and it's transparent. I think we've always talked about it, the city being transparent. You have the option to 15-year bond issue, let's say interest rate drop to six or seven years, we'll, who knows? We'll go back and refund the bonds and save even more money. You can't, but to do these lease to own things, there's only hidden phases involving them. They're not done very often, and the reason for that because the city's happy, revenue is free, that you have, that's approved by the voter, that's as good as gold as the bond is, and as good as gold as standard for, as the guarantee of the ice, right now on the bond, because it does not entail an annual appropriation in the city council to make that lease.
I don't agree with it, because other cities, for example, Central, they just built a new fire station with the lease to own. They didn't issue the bond.
And they generally do that when it's not available.
Can I finish, please? I'm not, I'm not discussing with you. This is a discussion.
Councilman Kim, Councilman Kim, please be respectful. Please.
Because you interrupted, because we, this is a discussion.
You don't, you have to have that fatherly attitude. This man has a lot of experience. So we all are cordial and civil, okay? Go ahead, sir.
We owe the, owe the last bond.
Be respectful, go ahead, sir.
The last cases, like other cities right now, they are doing the lease to own.
You make good arguments.
And also, we have, we have our money, about $20 million from the water, water and sewer bond is there. We can borrow the cash ourselves.
Oh, boy.
We can put money in.
Mr. Quinn?
Either way, we can do it.
No, we can't.
Okay, we have the people that work in the city hall.
We have a lease to own, or we can, we can borrow ourselves.
And that's a viable option. That's a viable option, Councilman Kim. But let's, Mr. Quinn, who works here?
The city may in no way borrow money from the enterprise.
We can't do that.
You, you will be the first president.
We're going to jail.
Jail.
We're going to go to jail, Councilman Kim.
I want to retire.
Don't even go there.
Please, Councilman.
We have options to lease to own.
You make good arguments, but you know, I just want to move on, and I'm now in favor for the bonds, but with, with the wording, the $10 million. And I implore councilmen that we can work things out. Let's, let's vote on this, and we can work the other phases out. Because if we don't, we're going to be in a stalemate, and, and we're going to have to have another meeting, and, and then time moves on, and then those interest rates are going to go up, right? So is there any more discussion, sir?
I just have one more question, Mr. Mayor. I'm kind of concerned about your earmarking this $10 million for a public safety building.
In case we need it.
In case we need it.
Yes, sir.
In case we don't, in case we don't, then there's always that, that option.
Yeah, the other money goes for parks.
I know that we need the fire, I know we need parks, I know we need a swimming pool, that is to me another big priority, but the fire department for sure.
Right.
So I just want to make sure that.
Yes.
That's in case.
Mayor Protem, in case we need it. Most likely, we won't, we'll probably have $2 or $3 million more to reallocate or move over for parks.
Okay.
And, and pool or whatever we need.
All right.
But they feel comfortable with the $10 million in case they need it. We're not saying, and they're not saying, that they absolutely need it.
Right, we don't know the figures yet.
We don't know the figures yet. We don't know the figures yet.
Okay. I have no more questions.
Okay.
Mr. Hodge?
Yes, sir.
I am very hesitant to comment. And you said respectable, respect. What is the respect Councilmember Todd Hawking is interrupting? You don't control that and then you said, I'm stopping the country.
Okay, Councilman Kim. All right, Councilman Kim. Okay.
You are like the acting godfather right now.
Oh, my God.
Okay?
I could do the thing, son.
So you try to, yes, you do.
All right, Councilman Kim, I hear you. May we move on, sir? Thank you. Okay. Any more comments? The motion was made, it's on the floor. There's a second, correct?
Mayor.
Who's the second?
I second for the discussion.
Yes, second for discussion.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Castro.
Yes. What about the presentation? You, the last council meeting you mentioned, we agree on the presentation for the other option instead to hear Mr. Marshall Lynn.
Yes.
What about that?
All right, let me explain.
Yes, please.
What I was more concerned is making the fire department happy. Having what they want. And there was, there was like, Marshall Lynn stated, there was this mistrust, I felt. And in a way, I thought, I felt that maybe the fire department needs to hear more about what it means to bond. Because there's always misconceptions. So we had the meeting. The fire department is supportive. And if they're supportive, I'm supportive for the bonds with the wording 10 million in it.
The fire department supporting the bond?
Yes.
Yes.
With the 10 million wording, not the other memo, sir.
The police department too?
Yes.
And what about the community, the rest of the community?
Well, we could wait and call them in if you want.
Okay, so we, now we are gonna take that decision because the fire department and the police department, they want it, right? That's what you mean? And you want it.
Castro, it's for their building.
I'm sorry?
We're working, we're working, moving for their building.
I understand. And I'm supporting that 100%.
Okay.
But what I don't supporting is the way of the bond.
All right.
We don't need the bond.
All right. Duly noted, sir, and respected. Duly noted and respected. Okay. Has everybody had a chance to talk? Let's vote.
I withdraw my second.
Yeah, we have our city attorney and state your name, please. Welcome.
Morton Park Deputy City Attorney. Just for clarification, in terms of the project description that's gonna be...
We're voting on, that's on the floor.
So the language that's gonna be included, is it just the language and the quotes or everything beneath that as well that's gonna be included?
I don't know. Marshall Lynn?
Actually, the quote, please, started at, yes, not that, at the end of the last session.
Where does it end?
The city council, we're closing the matter, it's Bobby Moore saying that.
Okay, so that's everything.
Everything.
That's everything. That's everything, sir. Okay? That's what's on the floor. We have another option, but right now, that's what's on the floor. And there's a motion to vote, so let's...
Mr. Mayor, just for the record, Mr. Kim has rescinded his second, so I will second for the vote.
Oh, he resented. Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. Let's vote.
Can you repeat the motion, please?
Okay. All right. The motion is, okay. The motion is to vote on the resolution with this memo that revises proposed changes to the project description as found in...
Which memo? Because there's two.
Okay, the one with 10 million dollars. And I keep repeating, we're not saying that we're definitely gonna use that. Most likely, we will not. But the fire department feels comfortable. They feel, they feel secure with that wording. They don't feel secure if there's no amount. And they feel secure with 10 million, not 7 million. Are we saying that that's going to definitely be spent? No, we haven't had an assessment. I doubt very much if we'll have to. And we'll have 2 or 3 million more for pool and parks. That's the motion. Okay. Please vote.
I vote no for the minute because I believe there are other way to fund the building.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen... Okay. Hodge Moreno. So this motion goes down. It's not carried. All right. So the dissent is 3 to 2. All right, then, do you want to entertain the other one? The other memo? Is there a motion for the other memo? What is stricken, what is not there is the allocation of 10 million. That's all. Everything else is the same.
I make the motion to not approve it, to looking for the lease to own options.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second, we must carry through. Please vote. So you, what was your motion? Not to...
Motion to not approve the bond, looking into the lease option.
The only reason I would vote against this item is that I don't believe that the police department has a critical situation right now at this time. I believe that the police, the fire department was the initial interest from the Measure H and things have changed where now the expense of a...
No comments out from the public. Please don't. Okay, go ahead, Councilwoman.
You're done?
Yeah.
Where was I? The critical need right now at this point from 3 years ago was after the earthquake was our fire department. It's been proven by an analysis that there is the critical need. We don't have enough money for everything, so I won't support this.
Okay, you're going along with Councilman Kim's motion, is that correct?
Correct.
On this memo?
Correct.
Okay. All right. I go along with that, but Councilman Kim, you added something else that we look for another option?
Yeah.
I don't agree...
We lease to buy, lease option to buy.
Okay. Attorney, can I say no with his, go along with his motion, but also just make a comment that the second part of it, I don't agree. I still favor bonds. We're just gonna have to come back to the table.
Well, I think we need to clarify what the motion is because if you're going along with his motion, you're going along with the entirety.
The entire thing?
Right. So you can make a substitute motion or request him to revise his motion, but you can't say you go along with part of it but not the...
Okay. So I can intervene at this point? No, we have to vote on his first, is that not correct?
Yeah, vote on his.
That's traditionally how you...
Oh, okay. All right, then, I'm getting it. Okay. So everything said, please vote on not to approve.
Not to approve the bond and then...
No, no, the second option.
Not approve the bond, the, looking into the lease option to buy.
Okay.
Lease back.
Mayor Hodge?
Okay.
Yes. May I make a comment?
Yes. Wow, my finger was right on the button. Okay, go ahead, quickly.
Councilwoman, would it be okay with you if we approve the second measure without the 10 million dollars? And then just simply revise the language and then we will explore other options to build the police department? That way, we can get the part firm. Would that be satisfactory to you?
Correct.
I mean?
Correct.
Okay. So we put, so only modify the motion to approve the police department now and ask the, come down to the new project control. Because the next three days, you'll open the police department, get a budget.
Correct.
Could rewalk food, arguing money.
Simply said, simply said, sir, there's not enough money for everything.
The police department going, they know that we got money.
Correct.
The boss, they come to you to, or the counter boss.
So you're addressing the second memo, right? Where it's not stated 10 million, I just want to be clear.
Considered, after 30 years, 3 people has to believe in it.
Right, but he was talking about a specific memo. He can, he can...
Okay. Okay, but now, Marshall Lynn, okay, but we need to go back to Council, Councilman Kim's motion. All right.
I need to repeat on the motion.
Repeat it, please. Councilman Kim, I'm sorry.
Okay, the not to approve the bond, to looking into the lease to buy.
Okay.
So it's a two-parter?
It's a two-parter.
Okay, so if we, if it's a two-parter and we disagree with either of those parts, then we would vote no, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Just for clarification, it sounds like he's stating to vote against the bond entirely. So if you vote for it, then this item is dead for the day.
Correct.
Yes, unless there's a motion to reconsider.
The bonds are dead.
Right.
Correct. Okay. So, we vote.
If you went along with him, it'd be yes. If you're against him, it's no. All right, Councilman Kim, your motion does not pass. 3 to 2.
I have a motion.
Okay.
That we approve the bonds as is, not put any labels on it, and with the intention of what really this was. From 3, from 2 years ago or whenever it was decided by our Measure H, the recommendations that never was able to arrive to this body, that the reason why now, last minute, this department is bringing this up was because there was a plan in the works that was to rebuild a crisis situation for our fire department. The police department may in the future be repaired, but not at this point. Right now, at this point, we are in a crisis mode. So my recommend, my motion would be to approve the bond as is with no locking down on what it's for, other than the fire department, the pool, and the parks. That's my motion.
So would that be primarily this second memo, Councilwoman Hurtado?
Yes, but instead of, yes, you're correct. Without mentioning 10 million.
Put fire first.
Instead of fire, uh-huh, instead of police and fire, it would only be fire.
Or would only strike out police?
Correct. That is my motion.
Council members, are you clear about her?
I'll second it to put the money in the bank.
Okay. All right, there's a motion made by Councilwoman Hurtado, second by Mayor Protem to say yes on this particular memo with no specific locking down of a specific number, but agreeing that the priority is a fire department first and only. All right, please vote.
For the moment.
For the moment.
Just get the money in the bank.
All right. We can't put the money in the bank. So we are at a stalemate. I spoke to city manager Oscar Rodriguez. If this happened, we just have another meeting. Mayor Protem, you're invited to see if we can work this out. So sorry. Time is gonna move on. I don't know unless you have some other motions, but I'm sticking with the 10 million. These gentlemen at the end don't want any bonds, so I don't see any point going forward.
What if we, what if we motion on the approving of the bonds? And earmark 7 million dollars for a firehouse?
I would agree to that.
The one in Alcentro costs 6.5 million. And why don't we earmark that firehouse and then everything else will come into play? And that way, we could put the money in the bank and that way, we'll have that cushion. Earmark 7, the firehouse, firehouse in Alcentro, if I'm not mistaken, costs 7, 6.5, 6.4 million dollars. So if we got a ballpark figure around 7 million dollars, could be a little more, could be a little less, let's go that route, just to get that money in the bank.
Okay, that's a very reasonable, but I still stand with the fire department. They want the figure to be 10 million. I don't want to leave out the police department.
Here comes somebody that wants to...
All right.
My motion is on the floor for discussion.
Okay.
Second, is there anybody?
Okay, I'll second for discussion.
I would like to hear him first before I second.
Well, I second it.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
In regards to, we're gonna go with the numbers strictly because that's obviously the point of concern right here for whatever is going. The reason 10 million dollars was brought up, obviously, is because we were looking at a public safety facility. Public safety facility included fire department, an EOC, and then a police station.
Later.
Later. Obviously, these, when the meetings were talked, they were talked in terms of phases. So the priority in terms of what this money was gonna be used for, obviously, as you can see from the presentation from our end, is that we are the ones that are in dire need of what needs to be built, unfortunately. We live in this facility 24 hours a day and one way or the other, I mean, we're gonna get fire department. Okay? The reason 10 million was brought up is because basically, we were looking at a public facility. We would not, unfortunately, we would not have a problem that came through, that you've earmarked 7 million dollars strictly for fire. But the 10 million, just for your reference, because as we knew, that we're gonna do any public service facility that included everybody. That's why that money was...
Now, that would, may I?
But at the same time, that money was earmarked in terms of phases.
Right.
The priority...
Please stress that.
I'd like to make a comment.
Once fire was done, whatever's left over moves on.
Right.
So...
So I think it, when you stress phases, it tends to appeal to my fellow councilmen to my right and left. Go ahead, Councilwoman Hurtado.
There's a couple of points that are important to remember, the way that everything works for our public safety. First of all, the fire department is on a street, 5th Street, that is a very narrow street. I used to live on 5th Street as a teenager and I remember the fire truck going by all the time. Mm-hmm, it's a very narrow street, very dangerous. I decided to move out of that street with my children because it was so dangerous having those vehicles go by in that way. Their response time is critical from the spot where they are responding from. Police officers are responding from out in the field. They are already out in the field. They do not need to respond from a police department located where it's at. So the response time is critical in thinking who has a priority here and who, who has a more important need at this given time, being that we don't have that much money to do so much. So if we think about priorities, I stand strong behind the fire department that requires, and I'll say requires, taking care of what they need right now. And the fire department, I'm sorry, the police department later on, when things are better, then, you know, we got, we haven't even gotten the first installment from the sales on this new outlet that opened, but that will, if all goes well, give us a good funding source to be able to do a new police department. But at this time, it may not be feasible to be able to take care of that. Because the other thing too is this question. If both departments remove themselves from this facility, what do we do with that building?
Lots of things.
What do we do with that building and who? It would be, it would be a shame to leave that building. So actually, my thought was, okay, take the building that already is there, the one on 5th Street, and remodel it and enlarge it, just like what we did with the Collexico Hospital. Collexico Hospital was a very old building and it was refurbished and it was a, and now it looks great. I know it's not the hospital anymore. But I thought something about that. That's really an inexpensive way to handle things at this given time. That's really an inexpensive way to handle things at this given time. If we had a credit card that was endless, no problem, everybody would have brand-new facilities, but you have to understand, there's a limit to this. And if there's a limit to this, you need to take into consideration, what are your priorities? And to me, there's no question about it. The priority is our fire department. And I don't see why we will even take a look at any other options at this point, given that our limit, we have such limitations.
Okay. Councilwoman Hurtado, may I have clarification? So, what was just communicated to you from Shannon about, like you say, that the fire department is the priority, but earmark $10 million, even most likely, we won't need to spend it, and we do it in phases, just like you're saying, fire department and what's the middle part, I'm sorry?
Dispatch.
Dispatch, right?
The second part is the EOC and basically, as Candace put it, dispatch.
Right. A public facility. And as we're going along, phase three, if possible, at that time, would be a police station along with it. But we don't know, because we're doing it in phases. Are you, are you, yeah, are you saying, Councilwoman Hurtado, you still don't, you still don't entertain that kind of motion?
I don't believe that $10 million should be earmarked towards a public facilities because we do have other needs. The public is looking at this and saying, "What about me?"
Are you...
The public also has needs of parks and a pool and...
Are you in the impression that we're definitely going to spend it?
And to take $2 million, or wait a minute, $3 million out of it, because originally, the fire department was seven, right? So, if you take $3 billion, I mean, we're going to lose out a lot in providing more additional services to the public.
What happens if we actually need, even if we just did the fire department, it might not be seven, could be eight. And then if we didn't earmark 10, we're kind of in a quandary, right? So, again, are you believing that we're definitely going to use the $10 million? Is that what you believe, Councilwoman Hurtado? Because that's not what's being said, and maybe I wasn't clear or other people. It's just earmarked and if, if, if only, if only, if only, we need it.
I don't want, I don't believe that putting a figure on this and naming any other department other than the fire department, because that is the original issue, why we're at this point and why this agency here conducted a survey.
All right. I do agree that it is a priority, but I disagree that we're just kind of throwing aside the police department, that they don't have issues or...
Not at all, not at all. I'm not saying that they don't have issues. It's just they're not as critical.
Okay. All right. Now, I'd like to go back. Excuse me, Councilman Kim, what was the motion?
The motion was to earmark $7 million of this, with this bond item for a firehouse and then set priorities once as we go along and move along.
Right. Okay, second. All right, second it, but go ahead. That's all right.
Can I say something?
Okay. Before we vote, go right ahead, sir.
Without the respect, with that motion, you're excluding police.
That's correct.
We're not excluding police.
May I?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. If we don't take advantage of this bond now, then when? You know? And you heard from what you said, it's going to be even more expensive if we do the...
Yeah, we forgot about that. More expensive.
So, you guys are saying, later, later. When? You know?
We may not get to you.
We're going to be paying this bond for the next 16 years, you know? So, we won't be able to get another bond in 16 years. That department, our department is going to get worse.
Yeah.
You know?
Just keep the water running.
Yeah, so we're going to even spend more money and we're going to save money if we invest in a justice center right now. So, I disagree with the motion, because it's excluding police. And sooner or later, I believe it's going to be sooner than later, we need a new police station.
All right, thank you, sir.
Mr. Hodge.
Okay, Councilman Kim?
The 98, the old, former border patrol building.
Yeah.
If they were, the border patrol, they were leased it and they didn't like it or they have to move it in the middle of the lease they left. In case, if we can deal with the owners to comply for the fit, if there's a good size enough to fit the safety building for the police and the fire together, maybe we need adding additional building there to comply for that. We might going to be less money to comply for the both side.
Less money if your proposition is you go to private, is that what you're saying, sir?
Yes, lease-to-own, but they can build, they can build more for our necessities.
Okay. Duly noted, sir. Okay, Shannon?